Welcome to the December 7. County Planning Commission. Okay. All right. Great, okay, welcome to the December 7, 2022, meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Welcome comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not yet been held. My name is Eric Casino, I am the season's chair, I reside in District 2. We will start our introductions here in the boardroom, and I don't believe we have any commissioners online, so we'll all be here, so we'll start down here with Commissioner. That's in here.
Commissioner.
Helen Wheatley, District 1.
John Nelson, District 3.
Jim Simmons, District 4.
Doug Carman, District 2.
Derek Day, District 1.
Beau Hanson, District 3.
Thank you very much. With that, as everybody had a chance to look at our agenda, and it's always entertain a motion.
So.
Serious discussion on this agenda. Uh, can we call for the vote?
Call for the vote. Commissioner. Commissioner Wheatley. Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
Hi.
Commissioner. Herman.
Hi.
Mr. Day.
Hi.
Mr. Hanson.
Hi.
Mr. Casino.
Hi. The agenda has been accepted. With that, as everybody had an opportunity to look over the meeting minutes, November 16, 2022. And if so, I'd entertain a motion. So. It's been moved, is there a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion on the meeting minutes from November 16? The motion is to approve the meeting minutes, accept the audio as the official meeting record, call, uh, call for the vote.
Mr. Pressinger. Mr. Wheatley. Hi, Mr. Nelson.
Right.
Commissioner Simmons.
Hi.
Mr. Carman.
Hi.
Mr. Day.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
And Mr. Seaman.
Hi, the meetings are accepted. With that, we'll move on to, um, the public communication portion of our meeting. Uh, we're gonna start out here in the board, or in the boardroom, and then if we have anybody online, we'll go through the rules for online participation, but we will start with Kristi White.
Good evening, Commissioners. Well, here we are, the end of an era in this building, and I didn't want to miss it, because there's been so much that's happened over the years, uh, with all of the hard work that you guys do, um, that is thankless, including the staff as well. Um, and I don't take that for granted, how much of your time is volunteered on behalf of the citizens of the county. Um, I recently, uh, came across the book Thurston County Water Woods and Prairies, um, edited by Sandra Crowell and Shirley Sterling. And it's a history of Thurston County, and if you haven't seen it, it's a remarkable, um, timeline of, of our county. And talks about exactly what I think you've heard me over the, the years, um, fight for, which is the woods and, and the prairie and the water, how valuable it is here, uh, in this county. So I just wanted to, to thank all of you, you all come with such diverse backgrounds and talents and skills. Um, everyone here is, you know, probably have, for various reasons, but brings, um, a deep appreciation of, of the county and its future. And so I look forward to seeing you, you know, um, at the new place, as they say in real estate, location, location, location. Um, it does have an impact, and I'm sure there'll be a change in environment and, and how, um, things happen and, and transpire with the new location. But again, thanks to all of you, each and every one of you, for the continued, uh, grace and, uh, delivery of service to our county, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody online that would like to offer testimony to the Planning Commission tonight? There's nobody online, is there?
There is. Four people online, I see no hands.
No hands. All right, well, that will conclude our public testimony portion of the meeting, and we'll move on to our work session on the Grand Mountain Subarea Plan with Caitlin Nelson and Amelia Schwartz.
Well, while we figure, powerful, and that's all good started, uh, Kate Nelson, in the main planning commissioners. Uh, planning commission has received a staff report that included a, an overview of changes with staff summary and reasoning, um, as well as options for recognition, uh, and evidence that cover veteran information, updated by Thursday, National Planning Council. The most recent ground subarea plan and graph code, uh, a map of the land use requests and the written comments for planning commissions preparation for the meeting. Uh, since today in 2022, we have, uh, I believe four work sessions, uh, we had a public open house that had to be from attendance from several planning commission members, we had a public hearing that received about 14 public tests and, and, uh, I believe about 30 written public comments. Uh, we're going to structure this meeting by going through each, uh, the four parts, um, of this project, uh, with a check-in vote before we move on to the next one by doing that thumbs up, thumbs down, uh, temperature check sort of vote. Uh, and then staff will ask for the two recommendations at the end, uh, once we come for each topic. One recommendation include the subarea plan with the, uh, there's going to be code that is strength in it, and then the land use amendments that do not require an expansion, you know, again. And then there will be one recommendation that doesn't, whether or not there is an expansion to be achieved. And we will start with the grid and subarea plan. At this point, I might be able to do this presentation from memory, but, um, I know that yours are going, do we?
Uh, it's not.
I can try. Give me a second to pull it up.
Yay.
We should be on slide five.
Keep going, Kate, is this? This where we're starting?
Yeah. Okay, uh, the original changes to the very plan and include updates to the land use data, the population forecasts, uh, houses plan and, uh, revise goals and policies. A third, uh, patient chapter based on, uh, there's a, oh, many posts, transportation study, uh, and some other changes. Uh, more recent changes based on previous feedback that staff has received and providing my background information, the 1996 plan, information on agriculture, the aquifer, employment statistics, and, uh, the sewer and water systems. My. Uh, at this point, I believe we have an upsdown quote on how we're feeling about recommending adoption of the subarea plan.
Well, I like the idea of adopting a new subarea plan. I mean, I think there's changes, we should make some changes, but on the whole, I think we're moving in the right direction. Are you sure we leave?
I'm no, I don't think it's done yet. I, um, you know, it was a little late, but I, it took me several hours to, to work on some of their provisions to the introduction. Um, I feel that it lacks, uh, robust discussion, public involvement. I think there are some, uh, factual errors, like the, there was one that I corrected in that where there was an attribution, I think incorrect. And more, of more concern are some of the elements, I'm really concerned about the historic and archaeological resources element, because I don't feel it's done, um, really, uh, way that you expect for a GMA. And, yeah, there are just some, some elements to it, I, I kind of, the, on the, as you know, I've asked, um, many times for more on housing, it's hard to imagine the subarea plan doesn't take a really hard look at housing. And there are no goals or actions or anything. And, uh, I, I requested that there be some development demographic. And I don't accept that that couldn't be done, um, because I think that that information is readily available in the census by, um, block, census block. So I have some issues where I feel that it's just not, um, ready. And then more deeply, um, the more I've sat with it, and, um, especially as I've listened to, um, public comments and read the public comments from the open house. I almost feel like it's worth bouncing this whole thing back to the Board of County Commissioners and asking a really fundamental question. And, and that is, um, is the UGA primarily for a fire metal reason, which is to have a water and sewer system protect the aquifer? Which is consistent with, um, the growth damage act? Or is it to create growth, um, or to, to play, create a growth repository, as it were? I know that Rochester, the Rochester Subarea Plan says that it is, but I'm not sure that the folks in Grand Mountain 3, they want to keep it rural. It's legitimate to do that, in fact, when I was reading the, um, the RCW on UGAs. It said that ideally, if you have a, a UGA that's for growth, it should really be a city, related to a city. Whereas if you have a UGA for other reasons, like that you need an urban level service, which is what this one was written by for. Uh, that's another kettle of fish, and I think we need a lot more clarity about what the primary intent is, and, and frankly, when I was kind of looking at these materials and thinking about what would be gained or lost from speaking with the 1996 plan. In a lot of ways, I like the 1996 plan, because it is more focused on the aquifer and, and the, the reasons for the UGA being what it is. So I, I'm feeling like when I was trying to weigh, well, what would be lost if this didn't go forward, stuck to the old plan? That's separate from, you know, like, from dealing with the, uh, the chapter, like the code. I think that contributes something, but I'm not sure that this subarea plan is going in the right direction. There are too many elements like the housing, or another element that I think should have been here. It's more about the utility plan, because if that's a primary purpose of it, it's not here. And there's a really big question in my mind, looking at the capital facilities plan. Uh, there's a plan to spend over $70 million in the next, what is it, six years, capital facilities plan? I think it's seven and a half million dollars, something like that, on the water and sewer system for granted. And it looked to me like a lot of that was about expanding, you know, some of its names and so forth, but a lot of it was about expanding. And I thought, well, wouldn't it be reasonable, I mean, wouldn't it be nice for the folks in the subarea to know what the plan is, to make that fair to them? In terms of, because most of it's going to be paid through rates and charges, or whatever you call it, it's, it's going to be paid by people paying the utilities. Um, so people in Grand Mountain are going to be expected to pay the seven and a half, because my doctors, and I feel like there should be more. Uh, that should be more central, um, to the plan, and especially the question should be asked, is this expansion necessary? And why not spend some time looking at how to reduce demand or provide more efficient, um, services? You know, I mean, I, I just feel like there hasn't been a lot of discussion about that, and it's a big part of the plan, because in the 1996 plan, it's funded, and it's why there's, so those are, those are just some thoughts. I might know, so, thank you. I'm done for now.
Does anybody else have your thinking, same response to that?
Oh, I, I can just say that my understanding of the, the plans to, ju- just for clarification, because I, I largely agree with most everything you just said. Um, but my understanding is the, uh, the plans for expansion, um, or, or spending on the water and sewer system, um, to expand it. Uh, that those plans are, um, scalable, that, that it, it can be done in chunks. Um, and so, uh, it, it doesn't have to happen all at once, which is good, but, but it does require that we understand what kind of development we expect to see there, and man, let me see, so that they know how to schedule that out and, or can expand step by step by step. Um, the, the system was originally designed to, to be expandable in, in kind of blocks or chunks, but, um, they'll need to know exactly what schedule to do that on, um, based on what we intend to have in this part of the county. So, you know, it's not an all or nothing, it's not one big bite, but it's.
By face, yeah.
By standing, yeah.
Please.
If we're free. Uh, also, everything that you said, uh, separately, a couple of questions. One, the, the, about the different paths to. We can just go, or it's not, the, on this plan. And to the transportation study, actually, there were some updates, uh, TRPC information. Uh, but I was most struck by the public comment that came in from, uh, Department of Transportation, which was quite detailed about very serious concerns about some of this. Current transportation system, that we're working on for, and, uh, any changes, that's based off of that letter, and the concern trace there.
I do not recall if the draft, uh, part of the, the very, um, based on population types, uh, that information. I don't think it's detailed in population. Um, there's no specific reason, that's not, wasn't part of the. The. Here at PC, conducted the transportation study, and they looked at the population, wrote this projection, but they uh, cast for 2020, and so that whole chapter is, it's on, um, that study, and their study is built on their website. Um, does that answer?
Not strict, but for the transportation.
Oh.
Also, I'm, probably somehow, all of the, we're talking, those are the drugs on roofs.
Right, so, uh, Department of Transportation's concern is specifically about the urban growth area expansion, not, uh, not so much the reasons for the development in the city, uh, to be a city. It, if they had a lot of concerns over, um, the amount of development that would be included in those project sizes as well, having that large, a project be converted to industrial, residential, so, uh, at this time, there was no concern for that, would be a, if, if we get to the point where planning commission wants to expand the area, then, uh, most likely have self-transportation studies require this part of the tax statement, um, before it gets to the county commissioners.
Right. Well, you all, you all know my concern about transportation. And that, I don't think the county sets aside roads where they should be, and allows for, um, the right of ways that are in the future. Um, and I'll probably be testifying to that fact that what's upcoming, county commissioner meetings, I think we need to have a policy in the county, and I think that's part of what, um, Commissioner Pressinger is saying too, is we just, we just haven't planned for it, and somehow we're gonna have to plan for those things. Secondly, in general, I'm in favor of plan, both the expansion and, um, uh, the, the changes within the UGA, and that the plan for the future and where some of these commercial centers are going to be, and there are not a lot of opportunities, uh, by the board, and we just don't need to do that. And everybody keeps thinking, pack as the lacy, and water, and just keep, you know, concentrate, tearing down buildings, and go, you know, more bigger, bigger buildings, and it really needs to spread out so people have employment. And I think that some of the things are planned, um, and what the local people want, their property has an opportunity to create some living, just in that area that, that are, are needed. So generally speaking, I'm, I like, a lot of the things that the Commissioner Wheatley said in her letter that we got this afternoon, as far as in the beginning and history and, uh, laying some ground market. We could, we could do a better job that way. Generally speaking, I'm, I'm a thumbs up, we can make some changes.
Uh, just a, a, a quick response to Commissioner Wheatley, when she was asking about the motivation for a UGA being either for, you know, environmental infrastructure impact or because of a growth promotion thing, um, I don't think it's an either or, I think it's an and. And, uh, because that, I think we can look at it from both directions, that's why I see the need for it down there. But I don't want to discount your concerns on those issues at all, because they're, there are more than valid, so, um, but I, I do think that we can move forward with something down there, because the stagnation is going to kill it, but please, please respond.
Yeah. I looked at, you know, what, what part of this where I think planning a revision to the plan like this, uh, you know, as a historian, I'm always interested in change over time, you know, that's always a big question for me. And so, uh, you know, that's something that, um, I, I asked, you know, just this morning, it occurred to me to ask the question, well, you know, we've had this plan since 96. How has growth really happened between Rochester, which gives this huge, it's a relief for a, a, I don't know what you would call it, but, you know, an offset for growth in Rochester? How has Grand Mountain really performed as, uh, as a place to absorb growth? And looking at the, um, the CDP data for the two, and also, um, the, the census data for the, for the larger Grand Mountain area and the larger Rochester area. And also looking at the buildable lands report. My impression is that Rochester has continued to take the growth. Um, the Grand Mountain has underperformed. And so there's something going on there, uh, you know, in terms of, you know, having had this plan in place for, what, 17 or 15, 16 years, 16 years now? It's not acting the way that one would expect it to act, uh, from taking population growth, residential growth. Now, I'm not saying it hasn't been, uh, commercial, but in terms of the, being a place where growth happens, that hasn't worked. And so if we're gonna view it that way, again, I think that's, that's grounds for saying plan, addressing that. Um, and then, uh, in terms of the equity issue, just doing a, you know, quick thumbnail trip to the US Census and looking at CDPs, because I was gonna break it out into three, two cents box of the, that UGA is, but somebody can do that. You know, Rochester, I mean, I just took Hispanic data, and Rochester, the Rochester CDP was 12% 10-year, uh, 2010. And it was, uh, 11%, so it went down a percent of Hispanic population in those 10 years. Um, Grand Mountain went up, it went up from, I think it's, uh, from 60% Hispanic to 19% Hispanic over that 10-year period, so it's going up. So if you just look at that data alone, of change over time, it suggests that there's, uh, concentration going on there of the Hispanic population. If you kind of break that out, think about what that might mean, that's one of the reasons I'm concerned about this whole issue of affordability, housing, importance of that. If you're gonna put in more commercial development of a sort that one would expect along 99, you know, uh, the stuff we're looking at, you know, changing the zoning for today. Uh, you're, you're not looking at family wage jobs, you're looking at, and that was mentioned by a couple of people at the, at the, uh, at the open house. That those are not the jobs that people want. They're the family wage job, they're not the family wage jobs, they're the jobs that, um, you know, there's a, there's a difference in there for, uh, women. They're more men, Rochester, Grand Mountain's younger, Rochester's older, I sent out that data to you all a while ago. Um, so there's a growing difference, and the more, you know, if you want to turn this into a kind of a concentration area, there's going to be more and more disparity, uh, between the two areas. And that's something that needs to be addressed, I mean, it needs to be addressed in terms of making sure that it remains affordable. And that's why I'm really pushing on that, because, um, if you're gonna say that you want to have a lot of commercial growth right there, and you're gonna want that, you're gonna want people to be working in that, then you're gonna be able to afford to live there, or you're gonna be taking people coming up farther out, and have enough come in and work at the burger joint or whatever. So they're, they're related.
Right, John. I, I just have a comment on the family wage job thing, because I had lunch with, uh, Richard DeBolt, head of the Economic Development Alliance of Lewis County on Friday. And he was talking about, uh, warehousing, distribution jobs, and, uh, what it has done to the Centralia area. Um, and the example he gave was the UNFI warehouse, very big, uh, warehouse distribution, um, center on the north, north end of Centralia. Um, that, UNFI closed two large distribution centers further north and, and one further south to, to combine the two, uh, in the Centralia area. And he said that the only employees of that facility are the management. Everyone else is on contract, and most of those contractors come in from Mississippi, Alabama, Georgia. Live in hotels for the length of their contract, send the money out of state, and get paid minimum wage. So we just need to be very clear, if we're talking about warehouse distribution, unless it's a Costco that, that treats their employees differently and hires employees. But if we're just building warehouses without knowing who it is, that is going to, to be the tenant of that facility, we're not talking about family wage jobs, we're possibly not even talking about jobs for people who live in Thurston County. So that, and, and he, uh, he indicated that, that their experience with warehouse. So that and and he uh he indicated that that their experience with warehousing distribution centers in Lewis County is that. They're not, they're not looking for anymore, that that is not the kind of jobs they want to create uh in their community. Some will be built, he he understands that, but that is not the type of uh economic development that they want to see in Lewis County.
Go ahead.
Uh I appreciate that data, what a source. But hey, we have a very large concern that I'm surprised we're not talking more about, which is the agricultural element, the saving of farmland. I I can't remotely understand why we're in favor of something when all of us have said that we want to retain farmland in the county. That we have no idea how we're possibly going to do that, that we know we're losing farmland specifically in places like this developed contemplated. Uh true, and that we know, that's a lot of farming, it's like the. And that's nothing we can do at this point, so we don't, where we're using. Impossible. And yet, until we do not for additional warehouse space for building warehouses. And we're talking about converting some farm into states that can use for warehouses.
Are are you specifically talking about down on the Duskin and Jackson proposals, or are you talking?
For.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I thought the only farmland that was even a consideration here of changing was Duskin and Jackson and rest of this proposal isn't farmland.
Kowalski was, clearly hasn't farmed it forever and. Yeah, once retired and sell their land.
Couldn't be farmland. It'd be interesting to know if it was uh taxes agricultural land. I guess that would be.
I I think we knew that at one time, didn't we?
I I'm not sure, but uh but you.
Nothing inside the UGA currently is agricultural. Go ahead. Oh, I had something else going on.
Always up to talk.
No, that's all right. Well, yeah, I'm not sure where that leads us, I I think that that. There's obviously a contingent that is dissatisfied with its current form, and another contingent that is ready to move forward with some of this.
Uh right, so uh. You know, we have four work sessions, uh. Our discussions have brought up concerns, but there haven't been many requests from the planning commission to make specific changes. Uh as a whole, so uh at this time. We can do um. A vote to see if there is a majority to recommend approval, or if there could be a suggestion to recommend approval with specific changes. We can't do overarching if we do a study and provide that information, but uh we had texts that. By the plan question. Yeah, or you could. Not enough.
Go ahead.
Yeah, what kind of third alternative? And I I just, I mean, I I say every meeting, I've been pushing on the housing issue, oh, the housing element issue, so. And and that, I mean, just as an aside. You know, I you know, I've been on here for almost a year now, and I guess I would have to say I still don't understand the process because I, in a sense, I wasn't aware. That we could simply say. Uh I want this changed like that, I mean, I I would sort of maybe too deferential and sort of think, can some of that, but if what. You know, it makes this an educational thing for me, but if 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 I'm supposed to go in and wholesale, you know, say, this is not right, you know, make it like that, or I want this. I didn't know, honestly, that that was part of the process, so. Um just that's sort of our little aside on this, but but for my third alternative, and I raised this earlier. I think we need some verification, maybe it can only come before a county commissioners. Um regarding the ultimate purpose of this UGA. I mean, I would like, I don't know if it's possible, because yeah, I'm a relative, just a year old here, but. Um can we bounce it back to the condition and ask them some questions, clarification? Uh and then bring it back to the docket next time, because I really want to know. Whether uh the county commissioners are thinking about. Uh. Grand Man. As uh mainly a place that needs protection of the aquifer. Uh and some free uh accommodation, but not doing as. You know, as as a UGA Olympia, like, you know, you guys. But because it's still very rural in Grand. I it's, I I mean, it's still, yeah, and do they really want four sixteen, you know, four sixteen? Zoning, or are are they going to? Go for the residents of the UGA seem to be saying they want to, you know, their ruralness, their rural character, however you want to put it, so. That is a very big question, I feel like, don't fully have an answer to, and can we bounce it back before we go on?
I can clarify some of that, uh I did provide a link uh to the Department of Commerce document that uh provides some guidance on. Growth and you know, some parts of the use for. Uh the. Originally. Establishment of that period is starting to tell it was based on water and food lands. But there was a point where the growth management actually um and designated areas of urban development, and so. In most cases, that area is associated with the state where land mechanics and future to accommodate to grow. There are some areas in the state that are just urban prepared, so they are. Uh the intention is that one day that will, it is determined by the government that that is an area of urban development that. Um needs to meet population growth, uh and while at the same time. Balance protection of the aquifer and everything else, uh and part of that is directing weight and sprawl in. Uh and so. We can't. Just specific uh designations, you know, prevent population growth and happen there. So I I think it was at the last meeting, required for comprehensive plan part up, and part of that was uh looking at housing. For different uh income levels and interpretation of that law from Department of Commerce is. Uh largely related to what we can do as a county zoning, and that it's providing a range of zoning options that can accommodate a range of different types of housing options, like. How we have our five and O County. Media, residential and UGA's. Um development has to go through beyond our zoning. I I don't. For that intention, for the intention of the urban growth area, that's not really answered that the board can give us, because that is determined by the growth management.
I I I would, you want to say too that. With the planning commission has asked the board for direction before, we've actually gotten conflicting answers, sometimes we've got answers of. Well, that's your job to find the facts and figure it out and then to advise us, and then there's other times where they've come back and said, we specifically want this, and then we'd like it reflected in your recommendations, so. They haven't explicitly said it like that, but we have got the letter before um saying, well, we got one letter that said, don't look at us for answers. You make your recommendations, yeah, you make your recommendations to us, and then we we will consider them and don't try to anticipate what we think. Or what we're gonna decide, so that was on, that was S and P, wasn't it? Yeah, so asking the board for explicit instructions might not happen.
I can see that, but I I think Helen's got a really good point, because I think if the if we knew that the board was wanted us to treat it one way or another. And that would change the way that we approached it, so if the boards basically said that, you know, we want to basically keep this. But they intended purpose, and it was so, you know, provide municipal services and protect the aquifer, and that's all we wanted for, that's a different answer than, you know, we see a future of growth. That I think could be really helpful to clarify, it would change the way that that I look at some of this.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wheatley, you had one?
Well, yeah, I mean, just in terms of I. I quibble a little bit with this concept that a UGA, you know, creating a UGA necessarily means that it must be about. Growth, because if you look at the RCW line, it's thirty six seventy A one ten. For route four. I'll just read it, and you can interpret it how you like, I interpreted it my way, you can interpret it how you want to, but it says. In general, cities are the units of local government most appropriate to provide urban governmental services. In general, it is not appropriate that urban governmental services be extended to or expanded in rural areas. Except in those limited circumstances shown to be necessary to protect basic public health and safety and the environment. And when such services are financially portable at rural densities and do not permit urban development. So it seems like this plan kind of falls somewhere in the middle of that, and it's part of the confusion, right? Because I think it initially passed, it got the okay as a non-city UGA, because it was dealing with the aquifer issue. And then it kind of morphed into. This growth thing, and part of my concern between the ninety six and the twenty twenty two plan was this kind of. I don't know, mission creep or whatever, that, you know, I saw that I was very concerned that the aquifer had kind of fallen out of the discussion. And that then we were talking about this growth imperative, because I don't read that as saying that there's an imperative. That a a UGA take growth if it's creative for other reasons.
I I don't want to sound quick here, but I mean, the middle word in UGA is growth.
Right, but this is the great management act, it's part of the growth management act, it's a tool.
And I I think the the other example would be, you know, let's let's say that we. The the county wanted to extend sewer services out along, you know, one of the ninety nine or something, or out along the shoreline area. So can you get everybody off septic and on to on to services? Like, we wouldn't sense that just because, you know, that got built into the UGA. We moved municipal services out there, that that meant we now, you know, in commercial, so I, in those areas. So I, that's one of the ways I see it, and then I think one complicated factor for me here is the development um that's driven by Trump. Because that creates a different set of circumstances here, and it's growth that is happening, and maybe it's better to treat this like an area where it's gonna grow. Sorry, started to, and it's the responsible thing to treat it as a place that's gonna grow for reasons other than just protecting the.
And it's the intersection of highways.
Just really quick, uh I just want to clarify that, if we're just talking about the purpose of the plan, that's fine, if we're not. We don't need to outline exactly. What we want to plan, like if we want to plan, we want to say that there's a focus, it's a group work, very hard on the government, however, that's fine, now you can make that.
Um I would just say that obviously they, when this is done, they intended it for growth, because they have rural three to three to six and four to sixteen housing. That is not rural housing, so, I mean, by that very mission, it wasn't just. I think what they did was they said, you've got this area that's growing. If we put this septic and water, the sewer water system in, we can do more to protect the aquifer. And I think that was part of it, but I think it's also about growth, because clearly, like I said, four sixteen is not rural. And it, I mean, here.
I don't even know, you couldn't put down on septic. And also, is it just the smart place to put the ground, because you have the services?
I I think I I I'm agreeing with a lot of this stuff that I'm hearing, but I I. North back to the commissioners, I think it's true to our duty, I think we're put here to. Plan and get some kind of responsible res. Reply to to what we're we're thinking, and and it seems like we need to be somewhere in the middle of what we're all talking about here. We want to have some responsible growth that puts into account the the aquifers and the water, because the people down there definitely. They they like their rural living, no doubt about that, but. I believe it's our duty to send the commissioners something, whatever that looks like when we get there, that's what we put here in these seats to do. Is and they've sent us the docket, they've they've asked us to review this, so it's my opinion to review it, with however it looks at the end. And that's what we send back to them, and if, you know, then they can say, no, this this, you know, you guys need to get this over again or whatever, but. I mean, if we go back and forth with them every time we're trying to clarify something, I don't know if that's what we're supposed to be doing, is we're not taking what they want us, oh, let me back that up. We're filtering through what the public wants, what we believe is the best for them, what we can do to serve the county. In the best way, and I guess my thinking is we, I. I'm not a hundred percent on with this, but it's our responsibility to send the board something that is workable, that that we feel is workable. And let them kind of go over it again, they're gonna go through the whole process again in the county, and you know, or if they don't like it, they can always send it back, it's my opinion, so.
All right, well, um. As we're moving forward with this plan, and we're gonna find out the details in a little bit, which is probably the way we should have ones, so.
And you know, I'm sorry, it was like. When we're having this conversation about affordable housing, sewer and. Bring the solution, bring the solution, what do you think is the solution? Let us do that, I mean, we're talking about it, but I don't, I'm, and I don't know what that is. You know, what the solution is, but bring that a part of the con, let's start making that the part of the conversation, instead of we just need this and this and this. Well, how do we accomplish that? How do we fund it? What do we what do we need to do to get there? So that's my.
Well, I would argue that the two best ways to get to affordable housing. Are by number one, which we have some control over, is zoning and making it. Easy enough for people to build in high enough density, and number two, which we don't have control of, is county fees.
We might be able to have some impact on that, go through the comp plan. In a couple of years. All right, well, um. Do we want to go through some of these individual? Proposals then?
Uh we can look at, thumbs up, thumbs down, if we were to recommend, uh sorry, recommend adoption of plan, just.
All right, we're on a negative, we're on a.
Okay, good.
Yeah, six six notes. Yeah, so and then my next question would be, um. So I think Helen's at the start, like, primary, or she's the first leader of the holdouts. Do we think we're in a place where we could get, we could take what we have now and make suggestions that would be sufficient to to move it forward?
I I I guess where you're kind of going with this is, you're kind of leading the charge on this, because you've obviously done the most work on it for sure, and so. As the majority leader on this particular vote, you get to write the recommendation if you like, and your recommendation could be an alternative. To what was proposed. That's a big job, but.
Well, I I would say I don't think we're there. I mean, I, to me, we need to go through each individual piece and see what happened.
So.
Because I'm, my thumbs down was, I'm not okay with just a blanket adoption of what has been approved. What has been proposed.
So you want to, you want to go through each of the individual proposals outside of the whole plan and then take a vote on that?
But I I'm, yeah, I'm specifically talking about the survey plan draft, so just to clarify, you were talking about. I I'm, yeah, I'm specifically talking about the sub area plan draft. So just to clarify, you're talking about you want to go through the rest of it before looking back at this, or is there something that the plan suggests at this time to change specifically to get to the point where we can recommend?
And to clarify, we're talking about the sub area plan specifically, not the is that inclusive of all of the other options? Just the draft plan? And it sounds like Helen, you're in a place where you'd be willing to move forward with a sub area plan with specific changes?
Yeah, except I think it needs more work in terms of, um, the the, um, some of the research, I mean, if it would be, I I mean, I I think it's not just changing the language or something. Yes, but I think, yeah, I think it can, um, something, but I don't think it's gonna happen this year. I mean, I don't see it happening, but, um, yeah, the end of summer. Um, because there are some, some things that really, um, um, real work, I guess, before. It's, and and the thing is, I guess, part of what I'm thinking about is like with the transportation. It's, in a sense, it's gonna go forward anyway, because the the TRPC is working out. I mean, there, this stuff is like so built in. Budget in so many ways, you know, it's, you know, so, so a lot, you know, a lot of the roles and actions in here are around transportation and I I'm not that as concerned about them. I mean, they were very much, uh, seem to be approved of. Public meetings and so forth. And, you know, people are eager to see some improvements, some transportation improvements for sure. Um, and it didn't seem like any of those were sources in constant, particularly. That's definitely elements of it that could go forward. And I don't know, I guess I'm not experienced enough to know, I, and it'd be a type of, and and because it's like a, it's kind of you know, maybe it can only focus, it can focus on certain areas or something and not be as comprehensive as sub area plan as you would expect it that we're saying for the you know, city of Orkia or something like that. I mean, I I I guess I'm throwing up my hands and saying, I don't know. There's a lot to work with here that can be worked with. For sure.
Yeah.
There's some stuff, and and another, just another element that I think really needs to be looked at based on the, on on the public stuff. Is, I mean, there was so much interest in public parks and open space and green space, and that's another one. You know, that key forward is a really strong issue for people and it's not trails and park, but also parks. And and then I particularly, I mean, I've kind of worked on this one, our discussion about the rezoning. Because there was a particular discussion about, um, the, um, steel hammer property. You know, you look at it and they were saying that it's a great park and you look at it and you say it sure would. And then there were like these connections to history. And I was looking at the history on that and the history on it's not developed. And so, you know, there are some real questions about you know, how things inter- interrelate, like, um. So, yeah, so, but I, I I think it's work to continue work. And and that it could be an improvement over the nineteen ninety-six in that area. And we won't be by the, you know, and is that an answer? I kind of got lost.
Yeah, so I'm I'm a little, I want to make sure that my mission stands that the sub area plan. We want to make sure that the sub area isn't redundant to our comprehensive plan, because they both work in tandem. So we have housing information in our comprehensive plan. So what we're asking as, sorry, I'm talking back your head. What we're asking of the planning commission is, over these last several meetings, is is there something specific that you are not seeing that we don't have in our comp plan? That we aren't, that we can do in the timeframe within the scope that we've been provided by four county commissioners, which is to bring this into today's world, not nineteen ninety-six world. Long time ago. Uh, and so what would that be specifically? Would you want to be seen in that plan that, like I said, is not redundant to what we already have in our housing chapter in comprehensive plan? This comprehensive plan, the goal price, they pulled it out. Now, the first goal of the housing chapter is enough housing should be available to meet the housing needs of existing and protected populations in the county in this area with grand mountain area, including rentals and purchase of opportunities for all income levels. And then there's a whole bunch of policies that fall underneath that. You know, there's two three, three, three goals, so I can, I'll read them all without taking up too much time. Remote safe and housing diversity, that means changing population needs that are in close proximity to jobs, transit and daily activities. That's goal two. And again, there is objectives and policies within, um, that goal. And then to preserve and maintain affordable housing. Enhance quality standard housing and to provide decent and affordable housing in first county. So those are the three goals that we currently have in our comprehensive plan. So what would the planning commission as a whole like to see in addition to those goals in the suburban plan that is specific to grand bound and not the, um, counties whole, understanding that comprehensive plan will go through an update here, um, the ten year update, and we will be looking at a specific more specific affordable housing piece and, um, which will include inclusion and equity piece, which is an extremely complicated and very labor intensive look that the, um, commerce has provided some, um, guidance on. So that cannot happen in this grand bound sub area plan, but will occur in a blanket cover in the sub area plan. So we're looking for those specifics. That's what we've been asking for at this time. We don't want it to be redundant. Is there something specific to this particular area?
Go ahead, John.
I would say even without looking at the the actions and, or if those are the goals, whatever is behind them is insufficient, we're failing at that. And so if we're gonna have this plan go into effect or updated and have that go into effect. And then there's some lag time before we address the housing element of the comprehensive plan. Um, I'm not comfortable pointing at the comprehensive plan and saying that took care of it, because clearly the facts are right now that it hasn't, it hasn't worked.
So you don't think this would be one step forward?
Well, i- if if what she's saying is that we don't need to spell it out in in the UGA update. Uh, because it's covered in the comprehensive plan, I would say, well, whatever's in the comprehensive plan isn't good enough. And so I'm not comfortable having that be the answer for two years until we get to it. Do we, look, read the goals again. Tell me if you think we've accomplished them. I would say we failed on all of them. Just looking at the the situation in our county right now, we don't have housing for people of all income levels. We don't have sufficient, uh, I mean, read them off again. Give me a thumbs up and down. Are we, are we, are we doing this or not?
I don't think it's the goals' fault.
No, it's not the goals' fault, but but I'm just saying, those goals are, have not been accomplished. That's not the reality that I see when I drive around this county.
Well, we do need to kind of focus on the grand mountain areas specifically and what we can do there. And if, and one of the goals is this housing element. And we have before as a proposal to bring in uh, some parcels that are gonna be cut up for high density housing. Well, that's a step forward in the right direction. And I don't know if waiting for a couple of years until we do a full comp plan update and then go back to Grand Mountain. I don't think that's serving that community at all, because they won't see any benefits of it for five years. Or if we start doing this now, they can start seeing benefits in twenty twenty-three. Go ahead.
Well, fortunately, it's not a straight line, building house being affordable. And and I I said this at a couple of meetings already. One of the concerns I have that I have is displacement. I mean, uh, it's right, it's right, well, and that was something that there was some length. In the code changes, because and and, and, you know, the Department of Commerce backed me up on this, you know, it's a big part of what you're talking about. Now, it's a big focus of north of us. Is that it's not enough to build housing. You have to think about who you're displacing. You have to think about how rising land prices push people out. People are in Grand County, they're in Rochester. It's one of the poorer parts of the county as it is in terms of income. Not necessarily in terms of quality of life, you know, their, their outfits, quality of life, and just money. And, um, and so I think, especially when you think of it through the lens of sustainable Thurston. And a decision that was made, you know, Thurston County is not Lewis County. Lewis County develops a lot, the I five corridor. That's its kind of heart for development. Thurston County made this different decision. It made a decision to essentially concentrate population in the north part of the county and protect farmland, rural life in the south part of the county. And and so it's different. Like, you know, you don't naturally cross that border from Lewis County to Thurston County and and other a different universe, uh, because South Thurston County is not the same as North Lewis County in certain ways. So, so, you know, we're supposed to be planning holistically about this. And, um, so, so it's not just the comprehensive plan. We're supposed to be thinking about uh, adaptable, the the climate adaptation plan. We're supposed to be thinking about the climate mitigation plan. We're supposed to be thinking about sustainable Thurston. We're supposed to be thinking big picture about what's the relationship South County to North County, who lives in these places? What do they use their quality of life? Quality of life is part of the Growth Management Act. It's, it's in there. You're supposed to be thinking about that. Um, and so i- it's just if you take, if you take people who are saying they like the rural nature of Grand Mountain, whatever that means to them. I mean, it may not literally be true, but I think part of what they're saying is they like being fairly cheap on the land. Um, and to kind of on the land stuff, right? Um, so if you bring in, um, high density housing, it's not necessarily gonna help those people. It may raise the price of the land, push them out. That's part of the equity lens that the Department of Commerce instructions are about. Is that when you think about intensifying plant use, you have to think about the potential for displacement of the existing population.
And so your position is you believe that adding housing down there will actually make it more difficult for lower income families?
I think you cannot assume a straight line between building and housing.
And I think, so, I mean, it it is essentially this really, you know, complex formula for like how you actually do this. Or how you can make sure that you have affordable housing. Part of it is absolutely making sure there is available housing stock. Um, but if you add housing stock, like, one of the, one of the things you have to be cognizant of is the the possibility that 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 changes the character, changes how much land is worth, it changes who can afford to live there. Um, it's a classic gentrification story. Um, and I think what it keeps, this conversation keeps highlighting to me is that if we want to make choices about increasing densities, increasing, you know, possibly increasing the the value of land in Grand Mountain, we need to have a really robust sub area plan that can help mitigate some of the downsides. Um, if it's done, it should be done. Go ahead, Kevin.
Even though my work here, where I'm all inspired, I have friends that live in that area. And I've been meeting with some and talk to them on some of these issues. And they're freaking out right now. They don't have the funding to support the students. They don't have the funding to support the school system requirements that they're they're overwhelmed with growth, um, and they want to know how they can plan for it. Well, you know what? They're really freaking out. The fire stations, they just want two huge fire stations and the the phone only missed by half a percent, but it's killing community, because people are about to find out the property checks. I mean, their, their property insurance rates are going. And it's gonna be a lot more than what it would cost if they just paid for the back service. So they're also incredibly concerned about development plans of trial and whether any of their plans coincide. Important can be positive.
It's a real concern. Go ahead, Caitlin.
Bye.
Yeah, yes, we we should. Let's move on to some of these other individual proposals then.
Okay, uh, we're gonna touch on the code, uh, draft first. One more, yeah. Okay. Uh, original draft code, uh, people quite six development code that was listed back of the suburban content and puts it to the Thurston County. Uh, it also included a reduction to lot widths in our three, our four central zones and to my grand house, so there and development guidelines and other. Uh, the only specific changes that have been requested so far are from the fireworks department. Um, so those changes have been made in the most recent draft that you proceed to clarify uh, consistency with the road standards of requirements. Uh, slide. From what we've discussed with the code, draft code, uh, how does everybody feel about adopting that, how it's drafted?
I guess my question is, I don't remember what did we come to, all on lot widths.
I thought we decided that lot, lot widths shouldn't play what is elsewhere in the county.
I don't, I I know we talked about completely. I think I was, I was kind of leaning that way and that my concern was having them wide enough. So if you had them, like if you had a lot that was five acres, make sure that there, if it's some odd shape, make sure it's wide enough that if someday you can change to a higher density, you could ma- still have a road in there.
But that wasn't covered by the flag lot?
Or did? I don't remember. I thought it was everybody's flag lot.
Well, I don't know what's specific. Um, we did discuss that where lot widths would have to, like, if they're going to develop it, they they would have to still meet road standards of that width. And so, like, there are codes and thirsty kind of that dictate how wide, so like a flag lot has to be specifically to allow access. So Thurston County wouldn't allow something. Nope, they wouldn't allow a four quote wide. I I believe there's also a, a flag lot, minimum lot width, yes, we could still, so there would after a site plan review, shouldn't be approved anyways. If you cannot, if it, like, bit access into it for, like, emergency reasons especially. Um, so we didn't get a full board recommendation for the lot widths. Um, there was a lot of discussion. It was great, but I didn't get a the planning commission wants you to change it, the planning commission, it has to do this. So what we have right now is just the draft that was provided. So if if you guys have as a whole a board.
Not getting myself confused, what's the draft say?
So with the minimum lot widths for R three to six and R four to sixteen, just from the Grand County area. It's, it's a little long, so I'm gonna throw some work salad at you. Um, so like interior lots would go from seventy-five feet to fifty, which is keeping in with some of the other U Gs. As all of these, the corner lot would go from one hundred feet minimum to fifty feet minimum. The waterfront lot in this draft would just be formal. The waterfront lot in this draft would just be formal. Uh, because we just really have a good definition of what would be considered waterfront. And there weren't lots that were maybe kind of next to the grid. To really necessitate that own category instead it would go under an interior lot or a corner lot or a cul-de-sac. So that one, then we've got cul-de-sac would stay at thirty five feet, flag lot would stay at a minimum twenty feet. And then cluster subdivisions, interior lot would stay at twenty feet, but the corner lot would go from fifty to thirty feet. Because there was quite a big difference between an interior lot and a single cul-de-sac having less than half of what a corner lot would be. Then non residential uses within that residential three to six. An interior lot would go one hundred fifty feet minimum, corner lot would go one hundred twenty five feet minimum, fifty feet. And then in the four to sixteen zone, an interior lot in a conventional subdivision would go from sixty to forty feet. Minimum, they they can have a sixty foot width, what they want to. Uh, the corner lot would go from an eighty five foot minimum to forty feet. A cul-de-sac would go from thirty five feet to thirty five feet, so that one would stay the same. Flag lot, stay the same at twenty feet, cluster subdivision, interior lot would stay the same at twenty feet. Um, twenty feet was kind of one of the smaller end that I ever saw, so I I didn't go below what I saw as a standard flow in the others. The corner lot of a cluster subdivision would go from fifty to thirty feet minimum. And non residential uses within the four to sixteen zone would go interior lot one hundred to fifty feet, corner lot one hundred twenty five to fifty feet.
So they they largely reflect what is elsewhere in the county?
Yes, elsewhere in the county, uh, areas that have similar zone densities are U Gs. So I wasn't looking at the places that had totally different zones. Uh, and totally different sets of spaces, obviously. Minimum lot would tie us directly into the density, so it would not be cohesive if I went to others. And this would not change what density is allowed to development. Uh, the, just as a reminder, the reason that we are changing this is because it was reported that applicants were not equipped to meet. But they were allowed to have for density because these were the factor.
You can go ahead.
Well, yeah, there was a question. Can they go in the four to sixteen? Or, I'm not sure.
I think we did, I thought the answer was yeah.
Yeah, I think it was, yes. And then I had a, you know, back up, because I definitely had a discussion about the water flat front, you kind of went back and forth and. Um, you know, like it's basically Curry Creek. And you just said, it's not very many properties, but I'm just wondering. I thought that it was a long time ago, but Jackson, I'm kidding. I was gonna say, you know, for tonight, that's one of the few, you know, I only have a couple of things, but that was one of the just. I'd really like to see that retained, I guess, because I like the, I mean. I don't know if things are necessarily critical areas or or not, so I don't know if they're protected by critical areas ordinance. So I'm wondering if sixty feet would, I mean, if it's relatively, yeah, that's okay. But, you know, why not just retain that waterfront lot, you know, like take.
So one thing we would want to define it then too.
Okay.
Um, and then these aren't in the S M P. So they're not within the shoreline, yeah, um, they're right outside, they're not within it. What, by aesthetic concerns?
The creek itself does not meet the requirements to be part of, to be classified as the shoreline that meets the S M P requirements.
Oh, well, that seems like a reason to keep the. But it does still have the critical area requirement.
Which should be, it's not pretty good, it's just there to show us that fact, they wouldn't.
Per the possibility, the critical area buffer is larger than what are lot widths.
And environmental regulations that would apply would still apply.
Yeah.
That being said, though, if you want to make that, if you make that change, you can do that. For on that to more experienced. And yeah, I've been looking for it an entire.
I would say. Lot widths doesn't have lots of critical areas because, and it could, and, and, yeah. I don't think this is going to happen there, but it could be an issue where if you have to have too wide of a lot width. Then maybe you have to change something because you're, you know, getting, you're trying to get around that critical area and build something. Whereas if you, the more you narrow that down, the more options you have on that piece of property.
So that that was another part of this, we did talk about the fact that, um, this minimum lot width is actually smaller than all of the others. Because it was intended to make it easy to develop around there. So, um, so that would also be, would mean to consider.
I'm all right.
With the proposed changes?
Yes.
I'm gonna have a couple.
Okay.
Uh, we'll just, we can maybe do a different concept from sound.
Are you still on?
Well, just real, no, not, not lot width, there's a couple of little things.
Okay, let's finish up lot widths, is everybody on board with the proposal for lot widths?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Hey, did you want to go through these in a particular order?
For the land use?
Yeah, so I I want to make sure that we hit Commissioner Wheelie's stuff, but if you're wanting to go in order, we'll just make sure we pick her up on that. And or we could defer to her now, whichever way you want to go.
Yeah, let me go through them really quick.
Okay.
Yeah. There. Uh, slide. One more slide? Okay, so we have, uh, five land use zoning requests that, uh, do not, uh, involve an expansion to the P D A. Slide. Uh, for zoning changes in general, consideration should include goals of the surveying plan, countywide planning policies, uh, in the comment. Slide. Okay, yeah, there you go. Um, for zoning changes to properties with a rural designation, uh, this policy from the comprehensive plan is also applicable. Um, this will apply to the Jacksonism property as well as all three of the properties requesting expansions to P D A. Since all core properties are located outside the, and that's considered rural. Slide. Uh, Steel Hammer family trust property requesting a reset to our real Marshall and is currently developed. Slide. The old fire station is developed and requesting a reset to arterial purple. But the Morgan property is undeveloped and requesting arterial purple. Slide. Uh, the tribal trust lands is developed with the Great Hall Fudge and is supposed to be residential to arterial Marshall. Slide. The Jackson's property is located outside of the U G A, but not requesting an expansion. Uh, the applicants requesting a reset, rural resource industrial and the, the, the policies for rezones to rural problems. Slide. Uh, since the ground is providing some investment in these northeast materials that show, um, previous properties. Yeah, what's? What, I'm sorry, questions?
Go ahead, please.
Jackson, same, probably seem to, I think that, I'm very, I want to comment. That's another question about that, if it's outside, yay. Uh, is it outside the sub area? Like, is it outside the sub area?
Technically, yes, but.
And it's not a request for expansion, so, hey, where are all of this is, or should we be considering this? Uh, this particular property is not in the sub area. And it's not a request for expansion. And there seem to be questions that maybe need to be answered. You know, sort of with the county policy more than the sub area on this, on this property. So, and can we pull it out and consider it separately or and maybe just not consider it? It's a question, because it's not your part of the sub area.
I think now is the better time to talk about it, since it's pretty jinxed. You know, we just could have asked for a lot of different things, so I think that us taking some sort of action on it would be appropriate.
Would, would we be recommending also, I mean, a U G A expansion? Do you have, I think we just have some hanging out there outside the rezon.
Every reason.
This is standard outside of U G.
So, I mean, it's, it wasn't in this, um, because it is adjacent, uh, and the sub area plan. While it focuses on in the sub area and in the U G, it does still need to have properties surrounding area. Um, and so. You know, it's part of ten, we're talking about the other properties, we're also considering policies. This one just has a rural policy that applies to it. Um, so I I do think it would be appropriate to consider here, but if you want to. Uh. If you want. If you want to recommend not, uh, rezoning it. Because of, um, fact that it is rural, or because it is. If it, if it's intense use, it's, uh, you're raising industrial use adjacent to the urban area. You can recommend whichever, you could not include it.
Do you have someone? Or catch him? I mean, the board commissioner, they get all these requests, you know, so group them together as they want to work together. So, I mean, that's why it's here is because they want us to act on it. So.
Are you, or mainly a thumbs up, thumbs down to include it?
Well, so, uh, what we could do is we could, thumbs up, thumbs down as a whole or?
I think we should probably do these one at a time, if we can burn through these, yeah.
Uh, so we want to.
Um.
Deal?
I, 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 I think that if we at least got a feel, that we, yeah, we did it right now, we at least know if we're close or if we're, you know, maybe we're in agreement on everything already. Go ahead.
Slide thirteen, perfect. I mentioned this last time, that's discussion, item C. These are the three things. This should only, and these three things, item C, the reason for maintaining enhanced environment quality. And I'm just curious because I see other information here relative to as it developed, developed, is it in the plan? So, for public comments, but I don't see it on here for each of these five models. Uh, it does get maintained or against environmental quality. And I have to guess multiple, that for keeping that quality. Um, but I'm like, you know, here.
I, yeah. Yeah.
Wouldn't certainly consider it, shoot it down too. Well, just, just to get a thumbnail on Jackson seeing, how are people feeling about a, the rezon?
Hold it out, that, is that all thumbs down?
That's unanimous.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. What's the next one, Caitlin?
Uh, let's go to the steel hammer.
Okay. The steel hammer.
I'm sorry, Kate, you cut out which slide?
Uh, steel hammer, um, so that would be fourteen.
I have one question about some of these, we have a couple words, there are proposals to move from, um, residential to commercial. Um, what are options for like mixed use zoning in some of these?
Uh, well, we, so, the archer does still allow, um, the family.
Does it?
But the same density as our floor.
Um, perfect, that makes. Please.
I guess my, I listened to the, uh, you know, looked at the comments and on the steel hammer. I guess this is one of those ones where I feel like we had an open space and recreational plan. Easier to have an opinion about this because, um, it seems like, uh. I don't know where, you know, other than a couple of discussions that trails. I don't know where, um, putting parks and creating character for. Grant, two of those parks is being considered, the current proposal plan. And the public comment made sense to me that this is an area that might be considered for that. Um, so how's the, how's the zoning? Impact that one?
So we, we do actually have a parks trail to recreation plan in the county, uh, it's handled under Public Parks Department. Uh, and it's, uh, currently in the process of being updated, uh, and I know that it is looking at a couple of locations in Grandtown for trails. Um, unfortunately, it's one of those processes that is separated from this. Uh, there are also a lot of, uh, legal issues with, uh, requiring property owners to provide trails and parks. Uh, so that's not something I'm considering in this proposal.
But, but, but if taxpayers wanted to buy a steel highway property, even though it's been reclassified, we could make it a park.
I'm sorry.
But in other words, if a homeowner sells the property to the county, they can make a park out of it.
Sure.
But to require people to make a park out of a piece of property that's very valuable, that's right across the street from commercial, you know, is ludicrous as far as I'm concerned.
Probably unconstitutional.
Yeah, probably.
Yes, uh, yeah, we, we cannot condition the use of the properties in the rezones. We have to look at the range of what's allowed on this property. So if they say they want to provide a park on this property for a purely off commercial. Uh, and we rezoned it, they could turn around and, but whatever problem, whatever land use they would like that is allowed in that zone. Uh, so that.
That's what's, that's what's tough about not having several. You know, like, considering these things, because I'm like, I'm one of the best developed historic and, you know, I thought, um. I'd like a survey of what the elements are within the grand plan. In terms of historic, you know, resources, then I'd like a, a, one of those discussion of a recreational area plan. An open space plan for the sub area, so that I would know, you know, get this guy rezoned, turned into a arterial commercial business by. Um, you know, is this a potential vast opportunity for purchasing land and creating part? Or creating a stormwater park, for example, which is, um, you know, this is another element that hasn't really been discussed in the, in the sub area plan. Is when you're increasing density and population, you're getting more stormwater. Uh, especially, especially in this area as it's more developed, you know, do we want to have a stormwater park somewhere? You know, where we're concentrating the drainage in a, in a way that also creates a place. So, you know, these kinds of ideas to play with, um, which I'm feeling like we have more potential to play with than if it stays. Zone as it is than if we turn it into arterial commercial, so I'm a thumbs down on that.
The, I mean, we've talked a lot about, um, low cost housing, the ability to give a poor housing. We can't talk about that and then also say we need to, we need to increase our taxes and we need to increase the cost of property because there's no property to build on. And I mean, you can't have both. And the problem is this county tries to have both, and so we end, we end up failing goal. Because we tried to do two counterproductive things we like to do. I'm not saying they're bad ideas, I'm just saying that you can't have the two together and and have low cost housing, affordable housing. And, and have low cost housing, affordable housing, you know, Olympia master builders have been trying to do that forever, but when you got fifty to sixty thousand dollars. And permit fees just to build a house, that's not affordable housing, my first house didn't even cost that much.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I'm like concerned about this is similar to my, uh, cultural methods. It's, got a bill of lands report, says we don't have excess of commercial, but we do have an extra housing. Nineteen seventy, such a rest touch the units.
I think we also need to consider that this is, if you're gonna have arterial commercial, this really is the spot to have it.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, and if. The county goes through and puts conditions or zoning implements there that. Impediments in there that make it so they don't do what they want with it, would not surprise me at all if that depressed the land value enough that the neighbors across the street bought it. Brought it under their sovereignty and did whatever they wanted anyways. Um, which I think happened to a lot of stuff down here, so I. Me, I'm thinking that both this and the fire station, this rezone is the appropriate thing to do. I think you had something.
Oh, good.
Oh, okay. Um. But I don't have to be right on everything, which I haven't been today, so, uh, do we want to take a poll on this one? Okay, I'm going yes on it. So, uh. Helen.
Yeah.
Okay. We want to have a separate discussion about the fire station or do the same kind of things apply to it? So I think the same nonsense applies to it as well, so I'm good with that one. Are you, oh, you're good with that one?
Well, the.
Yeah. Okay, it was different if you're on board, okay.
It's the best for the unanimous.
Are, are we, no Helen?
Right.
Oh, unanimous, fantastic, all right. Morgan.
Okay, uh, it is currently zoned, uh, as industrial and we are requesting a rezone to support.
Pretty sure we have thoughts on that one.
Well, I do.
Well.
Just your work on the east side of the, you know, the freeway that it.
So you don't want it to. Industrial now.
Oh, is it on the west side? It's on the west side, I'm not concerned about it.
It's on the east side, on the northeast side of.
I'm looking at, yeah.
Yeah, there's a different transportation.
He said I five north of, well. And the request is to go from an industrial zoning to arterial commercial zoning. I personally like the idea of industrial first, like industrial and commercial are probably the most intrusive zoning, but. If it's one or the other, I'd probably rather have the commercial than industrial.
I think my one question would be kind of a Scott question, I think, um, is there some value to having industrial uses closer to, um, agricultural areas to support agriculture? In my, so essentially I would just follow Scott's lead on this question.
I mean, it could be, but the problem is I highly doubt there's a.
Especially down one acre.
It's a one acre piece too, so.
Well, industrial adjacent tag, you know.
Yeah, somebody fixes craters next to it.
Yeah, I think it's. It's really not adjacent to anything, I mean, it's across the street from part of the desk which property and then everything. Like everything to the north of that is already developed, there's the truck wash and the competition off and.
That is way farther than. Yeah, so I'm gonna give that one a go. All right.
Okay, next slide. The tribal transplants, uh, starting to bounce the great old farm, it's proposed to, uh, to our.
I have a hard time telling the tribe that we're not gonna do it.
Yeah. It's basically the one to cook.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, so I want, because this is more of a thing. They built the great old lodge and this is what zoning fits it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna put it, yeah.
Any complaints on this one?
Yeah.
We'll call that.
Yeah, looking to a bad idea.
In that case.
You asked for a sidewalk?
Please.
Did we ask for a sidewalk?
Well, ask for a sidewalk, we could probably ask for anything.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we heard that a lot at the, um. What was that meeting, the open house?
If they say no, we're right where we are.
Yeah.
No reason not to ask.
All right, uh, let's move on to the expansion request, uh, on slide twenty-two. So there are three properties requesting an expansion to the area, and there is a staff summary and explanation, but staff were on his properties. Uh, slide twenty-three. The Womoski property is early on developed and is, uh, requesting a zone change to be identically. Uh, next slide. The desk and property has a essential use, uh, it is requesting it's changed to our commercial from our, by. Uh, it's like twenty-five. The Black Lake Forest property is currently being used for lighting and is requesting a change to light industrial, uh, and the applicant has also provided additional suggestions and public comments. Next slide. We get just an overall map for, um, reference.
All right, um.
Slide twenty-two.
That stuff some.
Yes. For the. Requirements, uh, in countywide planning policies, uh, that would need to show a public benefit, uh, yawn. That property for the general, uh, I have not quite evidence that someone's that.
Where you're at on that?
Yep, next, it's time, yeah, you do.
Uh, I would actually probably take one by one.
I, I think we should go by them one by one, but it's good to know where you guys are at already, um, which one you want to start with?
Um, I mean, I would start with, uh, the Womoski property.
Womoski property, okay. You got something on that?
Yeah, I think the, I, I think that public benefit question, I think this might actually satisfy a public benefit. Um, we have a declared homelessness emergency, for example, in the county. Um, housing supply is drastically. So I think you could actually probably make, in my estimation, an argument that it does satisfy the, um, that public benefit. What was it?
Yeah. Do you guys want to respond to that?
I, I think there's. I, I, I know. Part about the path that, yeah, we have to demonstrate the need for housing, I'm not sure that housing or housing in. Grandmont. I don't, I don't think they have services down there, yeah, even, uh, you know, talk about service not being. Not available down there, the whole, um, food, everything, you know, so.
Depends on which homeless problem you're talking.
Right, then that's, I guess that's a fair question.
The smaller homeless problem, which are the people that are underemployed and can't afford a house. Or the larger homeless problem, which is chemically dependent mentally ill.
Both kind of.
And, and so if you. Some housing. And will cost, some of those people who. Are underemployed. But don't have a house to live in.
So, so now you're asking for subsidized housing?
Subsidized, they just. Pay the down payment. On a half million dollar house or. So. And I mean, an apartment, you want. An apartment you need first last month, and a lot of them that we've had in the homeless shelters I've been involved in, they just don't have that. But this type of thing could perhaps provide them, so.
And we, they can do that. And we talked about it earlier, and I think this doesn't solve homelessness, but one of the pieces that we need to resolve to solve homelessness is the availability of housing.
I, I think too, I'm with Commissioner Day on this, I think too, when we think about the, the buildable lands report and the housing portion of this, I think a lot of the southern area. Of the U G A that is residential, that's going to be more A C or something else. We're not gonna have that for building houses, and then the idea that we're gonna have infill in this middle section just south of highway twelve. I don't think that the infill is gonna happen there for decades and decades and decades, I don't think the economic forces are there to do it, so I think that increasing the housing supply. I think the buildable answer might not accurately reflect everything that's, I'm not saying it's wrong, but I'm saying it might not be right because of the loss of. Of housing stock below in lack of infill in the north, so. The, the public benefit of expanding that U G A and putting some higher density homes in there, I really like that idea a lot. Can you, were you trying to say something, grabbing my test?
Uh, just that if, uh. If that's what you're thinking for, do you want to do a vote on?
I think we're pretty split right now, but we can figure out exactly how split we are. Um.
That costs with dense, you know, transportation plan is adequate to that, also there's nobody. Element, um, there would need to be a little bit more patient, but take, uh, most likely, uh, the deeper process, so, um. If you recommended, uh, an expansion to the urban growth area, that would then go to, um, the urban growth area, it's many, uh, and they would. Consider whether they agree with you or if they want quite a different recommendation and. Uh, you could also do, um, a SEPA checklist, which would. Involve, uh, possibly, um, discussing about, uh, an environmental impact statement, requiring a transportation study on that property and possibly how in addition of transportation, um. To that property would affect the urban growth area as a whole, uh, it may require, uh, an edit to the transportation chapter, but I think. We would need to know more information about that first, um. So it. They'll definitely be considered, it would just be later in the process.
And I, this is, we were worried about the affordability of the utilities down here too, and this is, this would be, you know, in my, you know. My judgment, and I'm an engineer and I have no experience on this, um. This is relatively dense, relatively, relatively easy to serve area.
What, what give a, um. This discussion doesn't have to be, I give a, um, just kind of a deal for the room to see how people feel about this particular one. And a thumbs up would be to approve the expansion of the U G A and the zoning change, and thumbs down would be to not. For the Womoski, for Womoski only, for Womoski only.
I'm gonna stick with the stuff, but I could be going over. I care about it.
Okay. On the fence, okay, we'll have.
The idea of adding housing down there, and, but that's a, but thirty acres, it's a long house.
It is, doesn't mean it'll come at the same time, though.
I know, but, and it's also, I mean. Having been down, that's a lot of traffic for that area.
It is.
And, but on the other hand. Um, you know, somebody said something about infill, you know, to, to the east of that, and, yeah, that's gonna be a long ways because I'll bet you. Ninety percent of that housing is less than twenty years old. Hmm, I mean, a lot of this, this stuff in the, the south end, that's towards the free, that is all fairly.
Well, let's, uh, move forward with that one being undecided but not looking good.
I guess what I would like to know a little bit more about, when you say that, um, because I think we've talked about this before, as far as the expansion of the U G A. Can we justify it? And I mean, it seems like I've heard that we've had, that there's enough housing down there to take care of the next twenty years, so can we justify adding this to the?
Jim, I, I think part of that justification is that all the housing building could still happen here and the infill would happen. But, so, and I could be wrong, but I don't believe that the infill is gonna happen, and I don't believe that all the. Opportunities to build houses in the southern part of the U G A actually happening, so I think they're gonna go commercial.
I, I.
I could be wrong.
And no, I, I, I believe what you're saying, I totally agree with that, but the, it's the way it's set up right now, and so we kind of have to go with that rather than what we think is gonna happen.
You're, Eric.
I, I'd say I'm, I, I think I'm in the same area as you that the, the specifics of any of these requests. I can't even really, I may think they're a good idea, but, but I can't get past, can I justify expanding the U G A? And if, if, if that's a no, I can't even look at the details of, of these to make a decision.
And you don't think the, the housing need is enough of a justification?
Well, I don't think so.
Okay.
I, I think it's, I think there is enough, uh, there is enough land to build housing on down there.
And I think this is where the. An emergency is timed now, an emergency doesn't have thirty years to build out. Um, also, I, I also worry about displacement because infill equals displacement here and. Not knowing exactly what each of those houses is or how much they're worth, if we lose there, um, I, this is an opportunity to avoid some displacement, if all I can, or at least.
Right, and as I recall, Caitlin said that in the buildable lands report, company houses, I think they, or they think they.
Twenty-two percent excess.
It did, they, they, they didn't really take into account any real commercial activity down there, they looked at it as being pretty much the same. So, you know, it's good, you're gonna have, um, commercial growth and employment.
Let's, um. We're not to conclusion on that one, so let's go back to it again in a later time and move on to our next.
All right, should we, should we have, have the. The, I can really plan that in for a second, it's thought up.
One thing that I had, maybe I don't have someone.
Is the, is the property expected by?
Uh, the entire area is considered, uh, as medieval, pre-charge found, uh, there are. Stan.
Yeah.
It's all. Like Carolina.
Just that area is all county.
Um. Yeah, that is the entire county, uh, a development of that size, well, all developments, uh. Have to follow formal requirements, uh, they would have to be on a system, so you have to be on our utilities. Uh. Yeah, that would most likely also be investigated further during the E C book process.
So, uh, are we doing Black Lake Corner X or Daskin? Okay.
Okay, um.
My guesses.
Is anybody in favor of asking? Okay, we got a unanimous, no one to ask me.
Okay, then Black Lake.
Lake Forest.
Go fast.
Well, I'd actually like to say something on Black Lake Corner that we gotta, that I think we should consider. The idea, so right now it's mine, and they get to continue mining and continue mining, they can go deeper, I don't know how far their permit says they can go, but they can continue mining.
Underfoot.
Yeah. If they got this rezone, they're gonna quit mining, they're gonna do their mine restoration plan, and then they're gonna build it out to something that is less. In my opinion, almost anything would be less environmentally impactful, now. That's, I could be wrong, tell me I'm wrong.
Uh, well, uh, from. Uh, well, um, from what very little information we have, uh, I did speak to a hydrologist um about. The potential impacts to an active mining site versus an industrial zone area, uh, and he had more concerns with the industrial use zones.
He did. That was Kevin Hanson.
Yes, um, but like I said, that is. Only looking at it from that perspective. There's no other information.
Kevin Hanson's opinion is important.
Yes, that is what he's.
Okay, well, the other thing, I I don't even know if we can do this. If. So they own the land. Just to the east of that, that is in the U G A. And that is zoned the way that they wanted. We kick them out of here and leave them from the U G A. Do they need to be? And what would happen if we gave them continuous zoning, but all outside of the U G A? They'd probably still be happy with that because they'd get everything they want. But they wouldn't be in the U G A anymore. They'd have to find their own. Urban services. To do their own. Thing. I don't know, maybe that's not even, I have no idea.
So that is beyond the scope of what we're doing here at the moment. We're looking at their request, which is to expand the U G A. You're asking us to take a look at reducing the U G A in that particular area. It's not something that's in our scope nor something that we have evaluated.
Yeah.
You know, they they are asking.
I like where.
You got cut or break yet? Okay.
Are they only asking for the reason expansion or not in the?
They just wanna code change now, right?
Uh, so their initial application was a rezone to their property that's located outside of their growth area. Um, they provided additional. An additional proposal as public comment. Uh, that instead of requesting an expansion to the U G A. They would, they would consider uh a rezone to rural resource industrial with a code change to expand the allowed use. In that zone.
But those a lot of uses, Kevin is not as hip on as it being a mine.
Correct. Okay, go ahead. So uh. For me, I think this is not a bad proposal, but my question is, um. Would this be something that? Would be more appropriate to consider during the actual comp fund update? Like would these zoning maps get a solid look at? And that would be the right time to do it, because I don't know if we, for the U G A expansion, this one, I don't. Really see that, especially hearing from the hydrologist, um, don't know that we could satisfy that.
Well, to to back that up, I guess we should some talk about docket items because we do have an industrial lands. Study that we're gonna do soon, but that is the industrial lands gonna come out before or after we do complaint?
Before, I hope so.
If you would uh. Like to not consider this property at this time and it's dead review and uh. The industrial study, that is also an option. Do it at another.
I I still like.
I can talk a little bit about timing of the industrial land study if that's helpful for the planning commission.
Thank you.
Uh, so that item is currently on the official docket and we do have a contract in effect and underway. There is a third party consultant who's doing um bulk of the work on that project. And conducting the study. We expect that that contract will go through most of this uh. Most twenty twenty-three, sorry, we're not quite in twenty twenty-three yet. And uh we'll probably have a final study document by the end of next year, so. The research will be done prior to moving into the comprehensive plan update.
Would would this, would the Black Lake Corey be a part of that study?
Uh, it it's a holistic look at industrial lands throughout Thurston County, the rural and urban growth areas, and it doesn't just look at. Uh, rural resource industrial, it also looks at light industrial and uh. Commercial zones that allow for heavier uses, so yes, this property. Um, could potentially be affected by that. But i- it's more of a ten thousand look at where. If we need more industrial lands and where we could appropriately cite those or what kind of changes we could make to our development regulations. To uh better accommodate those uses. So um, yes, we could see changes that affect properties like this.
Okay, so uh thumbs up if kicking this to industrial lands report decision time.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Well, uh. Sure, since it's probably gonna come back anyway.
It come back. Okay.
What was the process if if there were one to uh consider? Reducing the size of the U G A?
Sorry.
What what would the process look like to consider reducing the size of the U G A and thinking about the.
Um, we would have to look at what kind of zoning that is, what that would um mean to the U G A. Um, and is it appropriate to remove it from the U G A because there are rules around. Adding and subtracting and because that particular area is zoned industrial, um. We'd have to complete the study, but it would be um. Highly unlikely that we would be able to justify removing it because it would not have a world character. In order to remove something from the U G A, it needs to have that world character, couldn't put something into. Excuse me, into the world area that is of uh that urban design.
Fair enough, fair enough, but.
I really have a problem with this request, the original request for the property, the property hall.
Uh. Which which property?
Black Lake.
Okay.
I'm really, I really find it is tasteful because I'm sure that when they applied for their permits for gravel mine. There was, you know, very strong assurances that nobody would dig that deep underwater table cause water problems and. You know, so now is it a sort of a threat or a. A leverage to try and say, well, we'll keep digging down lower, you know, let us switch it over to.
I don't know if they've actually said that. That's just something that.
Well, the representative for the toy or entire strategic. He said you should approve this of the right public benefit of the. Of the reduction in the threat to the water system. Um, I also find that disingenuous and distasteful from toy services because. He has already known that you just Google his name to be represented Panatoni. And Panatoni wants warehouses all over, not just Thurston County, but the entire high five corridor. And, you know, look, if they want them. There's lots of land that's zoned for warehouses. Buy that land, build warehouses, but what they're looking for is cheap land. That they can flip. Easily. And I'm not interested in making them more rich, and if you look at the location of that. And you think gravel operation is not ideal, but if you imagine an Amazon warehouse there and where would all the trucks go? Like, that would be a traffic nightmare everywhere, no matter which route they would have to go. How do they get on the freeway? A thousand trucks a day? They're gonna cause huge traffic problems everywhere. So I think it's a massive difference from its current.
Right? Jessica?
Wait.
Oh, we. So we're we're done, right? Well, I say, I should ask you guys, do you want to? Also consider the option of just saying no on Black Lake? That's what you guys want? Okay, then we'll we'll take the poll on whether or not. Instead of waiting for industrial lands report, just a flat out no now.
I kind of would like to see the report.
It will still show up in the report at some point, because it's still an industrial land. But we can. Instead of saying we're gonna kick this until after industrial, they can read, they can read two things in the last year, their report, couldn't they?
Well, it's. Is there materials difference? Okay. If 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 we need a recommendation against something, does that? Start a clock where they can't reapply for a period of time or something? No.
Does anybody have a uh thumbs, a solid thumbs down on Black Lake Corey independent of the uh. Industrial lands report? All right. Let's just go now.
Yeah. That's not the. That's a trigger. The way the decision needs to be made.
Okay.
Okay, because it's still, I don't know that it would satisfy that expansion.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Okay, no longer Black Lake Corey.
Okay, uh. In that case. Uh, it sounds like. There wasn't necessarily. Uh, agreement on the sub area plan itself, uh, so one option could be to recommend um not adopt that draft. Uh. So it sounds like. We really need to force recommend adopting that draft. Uh, and then we got. On all of the language amendments. Uh.
Oh, I just wanted to do a couple. I mean, I don't wanna. I'm, I wanna vote yes on the code, but I just wanted a couple of things, little teeny kind of things. So should we do that now or should we vote on the other things?
Well, we've already voted on everything else, right?
Well, that that was it. So that was that. That was just a good fill of things.
Yeah, or give a fill of things, yeah.
Yes, uh.
We're not making a final decision on A G M A stuff tonight, right now.
Yes.
Oh, we.
So, um. And if you're ready to do that, you take it in pieces so that we have one, two pieces to bring back to you. Um, then we can show some progress.
Yeah, what do you?
Properties part, you get that done, so. Just a couple of things that I'm sure we have to talk about with the development code that would then wrap things up, then we can do. Development code and the properties and the expansion, and then we can circle back to the sub area plan.
Okay.
I I really don't.
Okay.
Then we can be done with it.
Okay.
So, uh, okay, so my concern. My main concern, Gary, one of the big ones, my reference question, then the next one was on page ten. The patches. First. The product I thought was the best that will protect and enhance property value. I'd like to see the word enhance out of there. Can we do that? Is that the problem? Protect property values, but not enhance. So this is against page ten.
This is just policy.
If so. Uh, so if we, if we go through this and you make your suggestion and. We want to move forward with that as the vote, if you do that, uh.
So, yeah, let's take, cause, cause Helen did have a question earlier, um. That she was trying to understand if she could just. You just change and I would make the change or if it has to be a whole. Like the commission, that's what she's asking the commission at the moment.
So you're gonna plug your idea of mine as. Get rid of any hands.
Regulation has to come through the group to be, okay.
But, yeah.
Does anybody?
No, once I I started.
Does anybody want to challenge the idea to remove enhanced property values from that global policy?
Still protects property.
Still protects.
Doesn't.
But just word.
To that discussion we had. You know, complexity of.
I think if this was.
Property value.
Home plan thing. You know, kind of a general goal policy to county, but this is actually a development guideline. So, I mean, I think anything. Yeah. So anything, whatever you're applying to do is going to be to probably going to be protecting the house value probably. I think you can. Yeah, I I could.
I'm okay with Helen's question. If you can put Helen's suggestion on that particular one, your next one?
Okay, then I'll just do one more, um, and that's on the electric vehicles and the parking lots. Yeah, it's being planned. Uh, yeah, well, basically, um, instead of looking it up, I'm just gonna quickly say I, my interpretation. That what it's saying right now is that if you want to put in an E V parking spot, you can take that out of the landscaping requirement. Like the chunk that you need for to have landscape in the parking lot. And I'd like to um. Remove from that, it's it's um landscaping within parking lots on page twenty number. He. By. Uh. And. I'm not sure I understand it correctly, but I think what it's saying is, well, what it says is alternative features such as electric vehicle charging stations. Alternative stormwater treatment and other attractive and sustainable substitutes to a landscaping area may be approved. On a case by case basis. And I just wondering. I don't wanna trade uh. By ground covered shrubs for electrical vehicle charging stations, I think it should just be. Part of the parking lot, and if anything, we should be talking about requiring. You know, as part of the design standards, we should be requiring to have a certain number of E V spots at this point.
So I, well, as a note here, um, that was actually requested as a change by the current planners. And so would be on a case by case basis by the Director of um. Development Services after an environmental review. So that was one thing suggested by staff.
Uh, I didn't catch it just now, but that code is probably out of compliance with the municipal stormwater permit, um, because. It's probably referring to something like low impact development, um. Stormwater management, which is actually supposed to be. All of the county's codes and enforceable documents were supposed to have been updated to ensure that low impact development, stormwater management. Is preferred and commonly used, and if it's. At least the language is misleading because it's not alternative, it should be.
This this is her landscaping provisional.
Oh, I know. There was a piece in there about alternative uh stormwater.
Yes.
An alternative stormwater.
And make it present on a case by case basis, so they would be checking to make sure that it would still be regulations. And there is a section in here, I remember, or what is with Public Works, they requested. But I add a section that says this does not go above stormwater regulations. Um, trying to remember where that is. Sorry, I was. Well, so. It. Maybe we should consider just removing. Be altogether, or should we just? I I just didn't want to substitute lands, you know, electric vehicle charging stations for landscape.
Yeah, and it's not.
Like you don't want to substitute stormwater treat, alternative stormwater treatment either.
Uh, to your point, the county did not low impact development. It's so. It's it's a long story. Uh, but. Uh.
Does it help in the one of the first? Well, I I would like to to see if this might help, um, one of the added in by our, some of our stormwater team. When they reviewed this was these guidelines do not supersede thirteen county road standards, drainage design and erosion control manual. Or Thursey County Development Standards for Water and Sewer Systems. Would. That does on a case by case basis after. Meet what you're.
Not, so. No, not that, so it's okay.
So you're supportive of Helen's change?
Um.
What is the change?
Bell. Strike or five.
Or, well, I'm happy that or just take what vehicles out. I mean, I guess it is, it's electrical vehicle, electrical vehicle charging stations, alternative stormwater treatment. And other attractive and sustainable substitutes to the landscaping area. But I would be, I think, yeah, I think I just moved it, remove that.
And that's just an electrical vehicle charging station from that. Option.
I would just, I if we were gonna do that. Electric vehicle. It's not that it's raw, it it is a long, long, long story, and it's a.
Well, I have.
Stormwater land use interface, then it's broken everywhere.
We, we see a show of thumbs for removing electrical vehicle charging stations from. Okay, thank you.
They're. They're not required anywhere else in the code, just to clarify.
Okay.
And then what?
But the, but I think the point is that.
We're not gonna.
We don't want electric vehicle.
We don't want electric vehicle stations to be able to add parking spots and reduce. Yeah. Or this landscape.
There was just one. That was one. Where it is. I'm going to. Well, river rock, the requirement for river rock to be part of the base of freestanding monument signs. It says, it's A B design of all freestanding monument signs, the base of all freestanding monument signs shall be designed with river rock to be an consistent unifying theme. I don't think requiring the mining of river rock to make signs isn't good. It's consistent with county policy because we like it to river rock.
Where is it required elsewhere in the county to use river rock?
No, not that I know of, but this was part of the nineteen ninety six and that's, I do have a couple of examples of it. Area where it has been used. And I, as I understand it, it was just used to be. Theme. So it's.
Part of the design.
Yeah. It's just.
Okay, so I think you could keep it, but it's not, I think calling it river rock is probably the wrong thing. Well, it's a certain size like pit rock that you.
Yeah.
Correct. Cause you're not.
It's a round stone. Yeah, it's just round stone. They don't actually.
Well, I was going to say, it's not technically defined as anything.
That's coming out.
It's just a visual of its look.
But they make accurate also.
Yes.
They, they make accurate for that kind of thing. I mean, it's not even rock.
So are you wondering something more like, shall we design with natural stone or just remove it altogether?
Firstly, I, I just remove it all together. I'm, I'm not from Grand Mount, so I don't know how important this unifying theme.
I mean, it must be important. I actually put it into.
It was also mentioned in the Chehalis Tribe's plan of wanting to be these natural features within the design elements. So that is part of why I left it in because it kind of tied into it and I want to have.
Yeah, we could change the wording to make it more environmentally friendly. So what would you use rocks?
It goes consistently. Is, does the tribal way totally?
I don't know if there are, how was, this was just in the question, two thousand nine plan that they did with a CJ where they took community inputs and a lot of the consent was like, yes, we like a natural or an indigenous theme.
And I think we could stake it system with that.
And there are quite a few, so I'm sorry, I, I don't want to get too into this. So in the non tribal jurisdiction areas of Grand Mount, there are signs with the river rock, like Starbuck says, river rock at its base, Avenue. But then the tribe isn't doing river rock, but they are doing some natural appearing stones. So even the tribe's not doing river rock.
Natural appearing stone.
Oh, cause I don't really know what.
And river, and river rock could be natural appearing stones could be river rock.
Yes.
And they could be interchangeable.
And so if they have some river, they really want to use.
Okay, so if we change this to natural appearing stones, it solves all the problems.
I think so. I think river rock prefers more to rounded.
Round.
Yeah. The stuff like the sandstone is.
Yeah, or slate or something like that.
Hard rock that they use, you know, it's going to be hanged or. Yeah, I think, I mean, this, when you go someplace and buy river rock, it's not like big boulders.
No.
It's, I mean, the biggest rocks in it are going to be ones you can hold.
Scott, are you okay if we just call this naturally appearing stone?
I think he's to be, I don't know what the right term is, but I think it needs to be more specific.
Does it?
Because I think that's, that's the idea they were going for was we want this book in this area to kind of say, no.
It just.
Once I got.
Stone consistent with the area.
Oh, my God.
I, I guess what I'm, what I'm here is I've got to go along with what Scott said a little bit. If, if it was natural appearing stones, I mean, could it be a big boulder or something? I mean, open up the kind of the interpretation of what, what is a natural appearing stone?
What river rock or similar? Yeah, that way you're not required. I mean, I don't know. I just, yeah. And then like we. Keep the door open. Fire. And the way of having people in Grand, you know.
What's on the best river?
River rock or naturally appearance.
Shall.
Yeah. Okay.
Overall.
So we have overall yes to tapping in language that says or naturally, naturally appearing stone. Okay. Okay. Give the developer an option. Okay, what's next?
So here's, I got it. Here's the picture of buyer.
Maya, can you?
There's the sign.
Help me with proposing this recommendation.
You are looking for the unusual. Yes, so I don't have tallies of the thumbs up, thumbs down items. I got some of them, but it was hard to see on Zoom, so. Let's walk through those real quick and then I'll help craft this motion.
So we have agreement on the Thurston County Code changes for the recommendations provided by Commission Wheatley. And then agreement on a rezone change to A, B, C, and D. There was not an agreement on.
So no change to the urban growth areas. Or Womowski, Deskin, Black Lake Quarry properties.
Well, we, there was not a consensus. Agreement on Womowski.
On Womowski. So are we, are we waiting on?
Cause then we'd have nine, we'd have a time breaker. We can have one more chance to talk about Womowski.
Okay, so we're going to move these repetition on expansions to. Thanks. Meeting.
Can we do all of them about Womowski? Do they have to be batched? Can we do everything but Womowski?
Yes, we could.
Let's do everything about Womowski.
Okay, so the recommendation for the urban growth area and expansion. Recommending no change to the urban growth area for the Deskin and Black Lake quarry proposals.
Yes, so it would be the second, second motion, the highlighted yellow is wherever the planning commission has landed. So move to recommend no change to the Grand Mount Urban Growth Area and to make no change to the land use and associated zoning of Deskin and Black Lake Quarry properties. That would be the second motion.
So somebody needs to pull off Womowski and get that motion.
I'll do that. I, I moved to recommend no change to the Grand Mount Urban Growth Area and to make no change to land use and associated zoning of the Deskin and Black Lake Quarry properties.
Move, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is to recommend no change to the Grand Mount urban area and to make no change to the land use zoning of Deskin and Black Lake Quarry properties.
Wait, did I get that right in the first sentence?
Yeah, yes.
And does that still leave open the opportunities up Womowski later?
Yes, okay. Okay, call for the vote?
Commissioner. Commissioner Wheatley. Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
Bye.
Commissioner Harman.
I.
Commissioner Day.
I.
Commissioner Hanson.
Bye.
Commissioner Casino.
I, that passes unanimously. And so now the next part is on the. We go. On the sub area plan itself. And we were. Oh, let's, let's, so Commissioner Day had something.
I like to take one suggestion. So on, in the space where it says alternative stormwater, alternative stormwater is actually gray stormwater. So what you're actually trying to say is low impact development stormwater. Because it's required by law.
Yeah, instead of alternative.
But LID, okay, so if you say alternative, you actually, the alternative LID is gray infrastructure.
Sorry, yes, I'm all.
Yeah.
That's awesome. That makes sense.
And that's a good time to.
So let's walk through this first motion, Grand Mount Sub Area Plan. Did, did we come to a resolution on that with changes as suggested?
No, no. We're coming back to that.
Okay, so we will bring that item back. And we're just covering the land use amendments and the Thurston County Code. So going through the land use amendment, steel hammer was a thumbs up.
Yes, it was a thumbs up for.
All of them, but.
Yes.
All but Jackson and Sin.
Yes. Wait, wait. When do we, just the, just the landing for that moment. So there was a unanimous thumbs, or sorry. There was.
I got a six to two for steel hammer.
Yeah.
For fire station, Morgan and tribes.
Yes.
And then no on Jackson and Sin.
Correct, unanimous.
Okay.
All right. So move to recommend an amendment to for land use and rezoning amendments, including steel hammer, fire district fourteen, Morgan and tribal trust land properties. Do I have those four correct, Kate?
Yes.
And an amendment to the Thurston County Code chapters twenty point one five, twenty point two one A, twenty point two five, twenty point two seven, twenty point two eight, twenty point forty, twenty point forty four, twenty point four five and twenty thirty six to incorporate Grand Mount Design Guidelines and Lot With Standards.
Uh, with recommended changes.
We'll go here first.
Don't think you could pull out the steel hammer so that there can be yes going on in everyone else.
Exactly what I was going to say. I think we should batch the ones that are unanimous.
Right.
And separate from the one that was not.
Oh.
It's not a big deal.
Uh, just so that the vote is accurately recorded in for history.
That's, that's part of the record from our. Will our meeting minutes reflect the individual votes on each project?
Yes.
Okay, no.
Are you, are you worried about like some, just like maybe like a majority report of steel hammer or something?
Well, it's just pretty natural too. I mean, I just, I, I feel like otherwise. And it's not just, I'm a no on that particular vote, but it seems like if you, if you bunch together things that are unanimous, something where the difference of opinion, you're kind of compelling the person that's different of the opinion to vote yes. On everything.
Or vote no on everything.
You want to cross that?
So it's just the kind of.
I just think it's more accurate.
Yeah, and it's also more accurate.
So you could rather have a single steel hammer and work to do those two separate because they are different than the unanimous vote for.
Right, yeah.
That's, it's quick, but it just.
Just.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll have.
Can you pin that motion? Okay, looks like she had the many.
And so I'm hearing that we want to take steel hammer out and have that as a separate motion.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Is the planning commission okay with me adding in? Oops, sorry, the Jackson and Singh at the end, just to capture that there was a recommendation of no change to that property.
Yes, and that was unanimous.
Yep. So now it's just the three and then Jackson and Sin at the end and Thurston County Code chapters.
Well, OC D is what, that's twenty point three six needs to be placed in order. I'm happy to read it. I can read it that way if you want.
Hey, Commissioner Hand, who's got a motion?
Moves recommended amendments to three land use, three zoning amendments, putting fire district fourteen, Morgan and tribal trust land properties and amendment to, and an amendment to Thurston County Code chapters twenty point one five, twenty point two one A, twenty point two five, twenty point two seven, twenty point two eight, twenty point three six, thank you, twenty point four oh, and twenty point four four, and twenty point four five and to incorporate Grand Mount Design Guidelines, Lot With Standards, Recommended Changes. Move to recommend no change to land use and associated zoning of the Jackson and Singh property.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Definitely.
Okay, so the motion is recommend an amendment to the three land use and rezoning amendments, including fire district fourteen, Morgan and tribal trust lands, properties and an amendment to the Thurston County Code chapters twenty point one five, twenty point two one A, twenty point two five, twenty point two seven, twenty point two eight, twenty point three six, twenty point four oh, twenty point four four, twenty point four five, and to incorporate Grand Mount Design Guidelines and Lot With Standards with recommended changes. Move to recommend no change to the land use associated zoning to the Jackson and Singh properties. Is there any discussion on the motion? Call for the vote?
Commissioner Passenger. Commissioner Wheatley.
I.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
Hi.
Mr. Carmen.
Hi.
Mr. Day.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Casino.
Hi, that motion carries unanimously. Would you care to make another motion?
Sure. Is it steel hammer?
That should be a steel hammer.
I could probably just wing it. Recommended amendment to one land use, oh, I lost it. Got too small for me. Include one land use and rezoning amendment, including steel hammer property and we don't need to rest it because we just did it. Oh, sorry. Move to recommend an amendment to land use and associated zoning of the steel hammer property.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is to recommend an amendment to the land use and associated zoning of the steel hammer property. Is there any further discussion? Call for the vote?
Mr. Passenger. Commissioner Wheatley. Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
Hi.
Commissioner Carmen.
Hi.
Mr. Day.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Casino.
Hi, that motion carries six two. Thank you very much. Uh, I guess we will catch up with you at a future date on Womowski. Yeah, at the new building. Thank you very much. This is kind of longer than we wanted. We're going to move on to our next business, which is staff updates.
And I have most of it.
All right. So we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is calendar items. And you can see our calendar is a little bit wonky. Uh, December twenty first, we are going to cancel. January fourth, we're going to cancel, but we will start back up January eleventh at the new building. Uh, is there anybody that doesn't think they can make January eleven? All right. January eighteenth, we're not going to do because we will do January twenty fifth. Is there any favorite that doesn't think they can make January twenty fifth? All right. Well, we're hoping to see everybody January eleventh, January twenty fifth at three thousand Pacific. We got a staff update?
Well, I just want to remind everybody that we hope for the joint plan to set a date for that particular meeting. That will be a joint meeting with City of Olympia, Prime Commission, and President Perry.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anybody have anything for the good of the order? Please, Miss.
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry at all.
I just wonder if we can start thinking about having another get together for county commissioners. The beginning of.
We can make the suggestion.
Let's talk with the.
County manager. All right. Anything else? All right, having no further business, this meeting is prepared. Thank you very much for a long night.